Hello, everybody. Good evening. This is the State of Bethel Commission. I'm Catherine Hebert. I'm the chairman. First order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item is public comment correspondence. One second. Was there anybody that in the emails, any calls? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay. Sam Green, Corcoran, 19 Elton Avenue. Oh, there's just so much going on. I was struck by some comments last night about affordability of Bethel, sustainability, the development projects, and just, um, that's a fine line when you want to be, when you want to have housing and build up and then sustainable, which always costs money. I think people might have the wrong idea about grants, which you've already paid for. The taxes have already been paid, but they, but grants do not come free. And especially now the state has put regulations that there has been matching money, which before there wasn't. And the other, the other thing I wanted to mention was the walkability study, which I can tell you, you can write your report for this, it's not walkable. It never has been. It's a corridor. It leads to the highway, 84 and Route 7. And it's never been, uh, you could probably make parts of it walkable unless you wanted to reroute the railroad to have a stop there or more bus service. It just, it just, it doesn't make sense to me. And part of that is, you know, when you're a certain age, like, I mean, we're practically reincarnating in fact at this point. But, you know, you think you're immortal, like you're in your thirties. It's like, oh, everything's so great. And it is. But there has to be accommodation for people who maybe aren't in certain demographic, maybe not financially in the same demographic. And it seems that there's a lot of attention paid to, how do I say? Like identities or trying to identify. But there's this whole swath of people in the population who are maybe older, maybe they don't ride bikes, maybe, you know, they don't take the bus. We're still a car country. I mean, this country just expanded. It's the only place in other, other than Russia and Siberia, I guess, that you have this whole, whole vast expanse of land that really without the automobile would not have been, would not have been built up or expanded in any way. So I think that we're, sometimes we're trying to apply the mindset of Denmark or Sweden or another, or Holland or another small, comparatively small country that was built, built up from Roman ruins and actually developed into that centric transportation idea. And also, you know, so that invaders could not come in, you know, built in mazes and whatnot, and actually is walkable. So I just think that sometimes I feel that we're hyper-focused in a certain sense. I also, I'm going to say this again, I just have a little bit of an issue with the whole concept of sustainable Bethel in terms of, I mean, it's under the umbrella of Sustainable Connecticut. And which to me says Sustainable Connecticut parentheses Bethel, or Sustainable Connecticut parentheses Richard. That doesn't come free either. You will enjoy all the benefits and the love from Sustainable Connecticut if you in fact become a member, you go through all the equity, everything, you know, and it's great. But what they're doing, um, they have an agenda and that filters down to the towns and that's what they want you to do. Additionally, and I mentioned this last night, in Hartford, there are 10 bills on the table too, I think have been voted out of committee, that want to assign a, um, a zoning coordinator that literally will allow the state to override any zoning decisions that our commission makes or bypass them completely. There's also one that's going to eliminate wetlands review so that someone can come and build like a 40 apartments on a, on a wetlands. So that's where it's coming to. And I just think that it's good to be aware of the picture for, you know, you go gangbusters into everything. Now Billy and I, we're old enough. Are you still like, we're old enough to remember when, when the government really left us alone and we could just do anything, you know, like we didn't pay much attention because hey, they weren't in our faces. But it seems that there's a lot of government influence and, and wanting to control the smaller municipalities from the state and then from the federal level. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you. Thank you, Sam, Dan.
Billy Michael, 27 Elton Avenue. Just to quickly piggyback on it. I've spent a lot of time in local government since 1986. And I see it's always one line of motion. And it's always the consolidation of government power to the diminution of individuals. And over the 35 years that I've seen this go on, the reason I'm here so much is that I think the whole Sustainable Connecticut format gives an inordinate amount of power to unelected and unelected board and settle, and taking positions. And very, you're a, you're a powerful voice on things that are not going to be subject to the vote of the people. And that's why I'm always harping on the, the equity manager or whatever advisor. If, if the town wants one, I'm not gonna, I would argue against it. But if the town voted for it, and I said, I'm the minority. But the fact that there's no votes on these things, this transitory, it's a district, all these things that we thought there was going to be a vote of the people, never happened. Once the, once the nose of the camel got in the tent, bang, it was done. So. And my, my point is, I think there's too much power in, in non-elected organ of associations like this, of agencies. And without the vote of the people, that really sends it at steroids. Enough said. You know my position.
Could I just say one more quick thing vis-à-vis what he just said? You know, the whole point of unelected officials, I think the reason why it smacks us in the head so much is because Bethel is one of the, well, fewer and fewer towns that have a town meeting form of government, which is very specific to New England and involves the public making decisions all along the way. Like the public hearing, that the only reason you have a public hearing is because we have a town meeting form of government. Otherwise, you'd have a mayoral council, a town council, they would be making all the decisions. And maybe you've elected the council, but the town manager is hired. So this is about the most power that you can give the people in a town meeting form of government, and we want to keep it. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is consideration of approval of February 21st, 24 minutes. Do I hear a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry, I completely ran over my chairman's report. I get all engrossed in listening to public comments. Okay. So, um, real quick, my chairman's report is actually quick. When we were first appointed by the first selectman, there's four of us that are still on the board, myself, Sunny, Katie, and Peter. The first night that we had our meeting, we elected a chairman, a vice chairman, and a treasurer, and a secretary. And then when we had a change in leadership and some of the commissioners had resigned, and now we have a new commission, we will be voting on that, those roles. What I'll be doing, the chairman, vice chairman, and treasurer, because the secretary is provided by the town, whether it be Mary or somebody else. So I'll be sending out an email to all of you to see your interest in those positions, those three positions, chairman, vice chairman, and treasurer. And then we will be voting on those positions. Any questions about that?
I have one. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's the treasurer. I think it's the secretary that, that you have on the board.
Right, but you're, you're the secretary.
Well, I'm the reporting secretary, but you have a, can have their own secretary. Like in my absence or something that someone.
We have information, there's no treasurer on the board. On the board? Yeah. Just secretary, as you said, but. I wasn't really chair and vice chair. Yeah. Okay, so that'll be one of those three positions. That's fine. Okay. So this one, thank you for the correction. Sorry about that. Two. Secretary. Any other questions about that? Okay. Um, I had sent you several times a draft plan of projects and programs that we're working on. And if you could look at that and get back to me with any comments that you have, that would be great. That will go to Dan to review. Great. Just some information related to the recycling, the regional recycling task force. They do meet monthly. They will be discussing the electronic waste process. There's also a recycling education workshop that is put on by the Connecticut Recyclers Coalition, if anybody's interested in that. And Food Prevention Week is April 1st through April 7th, and there'll be more information on that related to our food scrap program. The pilot is going well. Tiffany did a presentation at the library. There was a small group, but we did get some signups from that. So that was really great. The West Cobb, which is the Western Connecticut Council of Governments, they had sent an email to all the member towns. There are 19 member towns in this part of the state. And this went to Dan, who is a board member of West Cobb, also a vice chairman. It was to see interest in participating in a learning group to creating a climate-friendly zoning and land trust use regulations. And also using a catalog of best practices and model policy. And they would be using a consultant, no charge, to any of the member towns to help with that language. I did reach out to P&amp;Z and Economic Development about how we can assist with that. So that is really all I have related to my chairman's report. Is there anything else? Anybody? Any comments?
I guess I have a question about the last bit you said.
The West Cobb?
Yes, and like helping them, helping towns incorporate this language. Is it something that's just for the commissions and boards of the departments? Or is it something that, like, we would be helping with or supporting?
It would cover the town departments, yeah. And if that's something that, that's the path that they want to go down, then we would assist with that. Anything else? Planning committee report, walk audit.
Okay. Let's see.
Um, specifically walk audit or just all?
Yeah, did the walk audit because then.
We're talking about it. Yeah, okay, that's fine. Just checking. So yes, for the walk audit, we have been able to secure a place, a location for our check-in table so that all of the volunteers that day can eat. And we will be using her, the leasing agent that manages the Bethel Shopping Center, that empty old Wells Fargo lot that is empty, that is a space that we will be using. We do not have access to inside. We cannot park cars around the immediate building. We have to mark it off with cones and whatever, our signage. But yeah, people can park in the rest of the lot. And I just informed, um, the town, Dan, that we secured that, that spot and requesting the police and fire presence for everybody's safety. So I have to reach out and coordinate those logistical details with them. Maybe not fire, it seems like just police. So we'll, we'll see how. Other than that, we started sending out informational flyers explaining the event and what a walk audit is to the surrounding businesses and organizations so that they have one notice and also an opportunity to partner with us in some way. We've had some trouble locating all the contact information. So I'm still getting through all of the different establishments that are in the area. We're going to focus from Halandia all the way to Reed Road and the intersections within, the biggest focus being the Stony Hill, Old Holly Road, Hollyville Road intersection. One of the things that I'm hoping that comes from notifying the surrounding establishment is that workers and people that do frequent those areas can have a chance to also participate. Because I think, uh, to Cynthia's point, it's important to capture as many different perspectives and uses of that space. We're, you know, trying to reach out to all of the different establishments around so that they, they can participate since it's something that directly impacts their quality of life on a daily day basis, being workers there. So hopefully they, they reach out. And let's see, yep, just trying to secure the supplies so that we have, you know, visibility vests and things that will help keep everybody safe during the event. Clipboards and all that good stuff so that people can, again, capture their experience and continue to advertise and reach out to local community, get more volunteers so that people are involved. That is where we're at with the, the walk audit. Kelly, did you want to add anything?
No, just, you know, again, a timeline as far as, you know, the first initiation we make. And Gabrielle, we can talk offline about this, but right, when do we then do a follow-up? With the, we have about 75% of the contacts. Also, do we then go into the stores or into those shops for the other 25% that we can't find their contact information online? So those are just the two additional pieces. You already answered the question about the parking in the adjacent lots, and it sounds like people can park there, just not in the immediate bank area.
Yeah, I was planning on following up in person just to see, just to make sure that they have the info and flyers and maybe we, they can post some in their area, like community boards that they may have.
Great.
So that's something that we could definitely plan what we can do.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Any other questions or ideas or?
Great, great job, guys.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. To you.
Okay, well, in terms of our planning subcommittee and our progress on certification, we, our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, March 26th. It will be here at the municipal center, but please note it's going to be in meeting room B because this is going to be used for early voting. So it still won't be available to us, but you know, if you want to vote in the primary, you can do it. In terms of where we're at with our certification process, I know for myself, I've started loading. Thank you, Gabrielle, for the assistance, the last meeting that we had. I was able to get in there and started filling some things in. So I took your hand as well as where I put a lot of place setters and things, and that does indeed help. So I'm working through that. One of the things that I'm working on right now is trying to get a lot of information from the farmers market folks for this year. We can get some great points for the establishment and the longevity of that program. But for this year, we need to get their new flyer and also their certification for the different food programs that they're receiving as well. So we're working on that, and I'm working through all of the elements that were assigned to me. I know that both you and Katie are, will, will be filling in your areas, although probably more after the events that you're working on, which are taking up a lot of your time, which they should, will be filled out. So, um, you know, we're plodding forward step by step. And if anyone has any questions? Yes, no, maybe? Okay. And so I'll make sure that that agenda and minutes gets out to everybody. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, to add to the certification process, so since we started uploading different categories and information, I, I requested a review because I wanted to submit in the application, but it wasn't letting me. So I emailed the info and basically I was directed to request a review. But then that response to that, they asked us to wait until after their April deadline. Since we are, since we are going to, I guess they're not doing the whole banking points up until the deadline thing like they did in previous years, which is fine. So we're going to have to resubmit for review after their April deadline. And our goal being the August deadline.
So that indeed gives us more time, though, over the next couple of months to get a lot more information in. So that's a, a good piece of information. I think that makes a lot of sense for them to focus on the people who are submitting for application, for their certification at that time and not eating up a lot of that resource. Gives us some.
They're also sending it up for review beforehand, then we can get a response back, right?
Right.
And then if they can tell us, oh, no, you're missing this, you need, whatever it is, you know, which is great.
Yeah, so we can submit things for review after, after that April, it's April 25th, am I right?
You know, I do not remember. I have a feeling it's April 10th.
Is it 10th?
What I don't remember.
For some reason, April 25th was in my head, but whatever date, we can submit it that next month. So that, that's a great piece of information. Okay. So if you have anything to fill in, kindly, please do. It's all out there. It's ready to be filled in. Once you figure it out, once you get there, it's really not that hard to do. It was just a little intimidating getting there, but thank you, Gabrielle.
No problem.
And, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll see where we're at.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions about either the walk audit, planning, certification?
Okay, great. Are we talking about Earth Day or no?
Yeah, why not?
I just, I don't remember the agenda, but.
Oh, did you?
I know, I saw it, I saw it. I just.
Here, 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 take another copy. Small file of paper. Must be an age thing. Anyway, okay. So next, our commissioner reports Earth Day. Katie is on vacation, even though she said she might chime in. I said, why would you do that on vacation? So I, I can talk, but if you want to say a few things, I have a few things to go ahead.
Um, we, we are in the midst of planning, trying to solidify and get everything together, sharing the flyer and involvement form, sharing it with local businesses, organizations, share it with a BLT, Birds Books, Caroloozies, we put it on the bulletin board, Multifavas Bulletin Board, Library Books and Board. The Bethel Food Pantry has it up on their door, and Dr. Mike's, if they put it up. So hopefully we'll get a lot of town involvement out of those. And I know that Katie sent it and posted it to all sorts of places. I just don't have her list. We are going to be receiving saplings from the Bethel Lions Club to pass out during Earth Day. So that's really exciting, and we're just going to try to coordinate pickup and all that stuff. So if anybody has a truck and is available April 19th, that would be really helpful. Because I only have a little hatchback, and so there's but so many things we can fit. So we're going to coordinate that as well. I'm trying to collaborate with Parks and Recs and HRA to get some materials and bins and things like that for the children's activities so that they can use and play with the actual recycling bins and the actual composting baskets. So it's a learning, exploring opportunity. So that's great that they are willing to help with that, with those materials. And that's really the broad strokes of where we're at, just trying to organize and get people signed up.
So.
I think that's.
Okay, so just to, for infill, for a little filler, there's about 19 to 20 streets for the Treasure Palooza component of Earth Day. And I think we already have about 20 people signed up, so which is great. And we are directing people to come here to the green, to pick up their bags, their vests and their gloves, you know, and then they can spread out. The fair itself is obviously here, like you mentioned. And will we, did you just say something about doing the games? You have to do, you're going to be coordinating some games for the kids too, right? And we're going to have other demos related to EV bikes, EVs, electric vehicles, motorcycles. Hopefully we'll get some EV cargo bikes, EV chargers. There'll be demos with, there'll be seedlings giving, what is it? Giving out.
It's on Saturday or Sunday.
Saturday.
The 20th.
Yeah. Yeah.
Were, are you asking about the sapling pickup or the?
No, 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 because I asked them to bring the cargo.
Oh.
Yeah, and EV charger, because my contacted EV, for the EV charger, they actually went out of business.
It will be here.
Yes.
But I will be in Times Square with the mayor of New York and another equa.
Okay, the cargo bike will be here, and what about the charger?
Working on that.
Okay, all right, well, let us know. And then to make sure that, you know, people are here to receive it. Whoever it is, okay? We also, Parks and Rec are also, we're partnering also with Parks and Rec for the giveaways, right? Let's see, what else? Is there any, oh, we are also partnering with a company called Postigen for, to do a solar installation demonstrations. Talk to residents about that option.
I know Bethel Land Trust will have.
Yep.
All sorts of things on, in DCs and potentially a book on hiking trails in Bethel, which is really exciting.
Any questions? Yeah.
The garden club and Bethel Land Trust plan on being there. Is it possible to get an additional piece near them from Pauline or Kathy?
Yeah. Yeah. Cool. Um, yeah, I don't, it's, so I guess you just mean like physically near them or?
I assume it'd be better to kind of lump them all together.
Yeah.
Just because it's similar information. Grabitate there, but.
Okay, yeah. I shared the form with you, right? I think I did. But if you need it again, just. Cool. Because they should definitely fill out the form so that we have all their info and what they need for it.
Is there anything else on Earth Day? So up there, EV charging, we will be sending out the RFI and collecting information for the town. Whatever we collect, Peter and I will go through it, we'll summarize it, we'll bring it back to you. We'll give it to the first selectman to decide what to do with that information. But like we had, have been talking for several months, it's a request for information. There is no cost right now to the town for anything other than gathering information about how the town, town would approach an EV charging network. Peter, you got anything on that one? Peter?
Yes.
Is there anything else you want to say about that?
Nope. I'm just actually chatting with the, with a charging company about Earth Day.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions about the EV charging? Solar, Sunny's not here, so let me just tell you. Like I said, before, there was interest from some residents, a lot of residents actually, to install solar panels on their roofs. Postigen will be there on Earth Day to talk to residents about a no-cost program to either the town.
to talk to residents about a no-cost program to either the town or the residents, but with a goal to reduce monthly utility bills. They're also planning on giving a presentation at the library, and we will have them come here as well, so everybody understands what this is about. See, the other options that she's looking into is expanding the solar farm benefits to other buildings and looking at long-term implementing of solar canopies on parking lots. That's what's going on with solar. Any questions about that? Pollinator pathways, is there anything that you want to?
Sure. So I had an excellent talk with Jamie from the Pollinator Pathway Program. In order to get us set up with a webpage, we have to create like.
Tia, can't hear you. I can barely hear you. Everything's going that way.
I was talking with Jamie.
That's better, thank you.
In order to set up a webpage, you know, you go to the website, like, the town has paid. We need to supply an email, and it was cited, rather than a personal email, it's better to supply like, on email, you know, create like a Bethel Pollinator Pathway at Gmail. Something along those lines. So I'm not sure how to go about that, but once we have that established, we can set up the Pollinator Pathway page. She actually has some existing contacts with the Bethel Land Trust and the Garden Club. She's actually a Bethel resident. So she was going to reach out to her contacts and kind of get in touch with everybody. Once the page is set up, we can start moving into individual sites, you know, public-facing properties, getting those to be more native species-based. And she's looking to kick this all off at Earth Day, hence the question about a boot, you know, we could be cool, walk them right next to the Garden Club. They also have resources to do like presentations at the library or any other kind of public involvement. They're willing to work with us.
That's great.
Kick it off, get it going.
Yeah, I think having a Bethel library would be really great too. Besides Earth Day, yeah.
Yeah, it's great. Keep the conversation going and the communication. Any questions about that? Any comments?
Yes. Sustainable Bethel does have a town email address, correct?
Yes, we do. Yes, you can use that.
Should it be a specific one, just go Pollinator Pathway, or like, would it be okay to use?
Well, just, yeah, we should, Mary's got a very good point. We should just use the Sustainable Bethel email for now.
Okay.
I have a question. Hi, this is Kelly. I'm wondering, this is the Pollin, the National Pollinator Pathway Organization, the nonprofit, correct?
Yes.
And Jamie is the Connecticut representative? Or the Bethel representative?
The Connecticut representative, I believe. I'm not, I'll have to refresh myself on her exact title, but she, she works for the program.
Wonderful.
Separate from being a Bethel resident.
Gotcha. That question's just coming from me as a nonprofit person and kind of how, right, how it all, right, set it up from the national to the local, so thank you.
I don't know if you have it, but I will give that to you.
I have a question, or maybe it's an idea, suggestion. Would it make sense to check in with the IT person for the town since this sort of town website? Or, I guess the question is for the Pollinator Pathway Bethel website, who would then maintain it?
It's part of the, their overall.
Yeah. Oh, they would maintain.
The overall program.
Oh.
Have you been, have you been to the site?
Yeah, it's kind of.
Yes, okay, and then so they just.
Right, yeah. I just wasn't sure, like, we would then have to maintain the website versus just having a link on there.
No, it's part of the. Supply like their examples, the Welton ones. So if you go to the Welton page, you see like before and after pictures, you know, examples of good pollinator gardens in the town, things like that. So we would have to kind of supply some of that information for them to populate the page. But my understanding is that they manage it.
We just need to provide.
The email.
Yeah.
It just gets you to that site, right, with that, which is the real blessing of this, because so many organizations don't have the capacity to really create something. And, and this way you get a very standardized sort of thing.
Now, that being said, there is some level of maintenance involved. That's why you have to provide the email, because, you know, residents are going to want to get their garden certified as pollinator pathways and things like that. So that's, that will be their person or contact to reach out to. So there will be, like, you have to maintain the email, just make sure you're checking.
So this group certifies pollinator pathways, that this nonprofit group.
Certification is a loose term.
They're generally aiming for, in the right direction. Okay, giving them guidance. Is that a better word? Okay, got it.
I just have one more comment to make. It's wonderful if the garden club is involved. I just want to make a suggestion that the master gardening program out of the Fairfield County Ag Extension Center be involved. I know Sandy is the person that runs the group, who's also participating. I guess there's going to be a booth at Earth Day. So that, that particular person or group is involved too, considering the garden work that they do in the area.
Excellent. So if we, if we plan to have the webpage established and pick off for Earth Day, and then Earth Day would be a perfect time to coordinate and get all of our ducks in a row to start the actual gardening.
I think I'll just forward you the flyer and the links so that you have it all. I feel like I don't think I included all the links before, so.
So right now, the emails are linked to my phone, right, Mary? The emails, the.
You have access.
I have access, but I've also forwarded, you're included, didn't I forward that to you? So you can see that, so that's not, so there's some redundancy on that. And it can only be one person per commission. Am I saying that right?
I believe so.
Okay. But you'll see them anyway.
Yeah, all right. So in terms of sending things.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out. Because I could be out of town or whatever, but okay, we'll figure that out. Are there any other questions related to the Pollinator Pathways? Thank you. This is great. Okay, next on the agenda is the Bethel Pride Festival.
Yes, so if you all remember last year, I think that was the first sort of outreach event we attempted to do, other than obviously Earth Day itself, that's its own event. So I just wanted to ask all of you if it was okay to register again be present with a table and, or move, it was stable, at the pride event to, again, you know, have Bethel residents tell us what they're thinking and feeling, and we can capture and collect that information, and that we can let them know all of the different things that are happening in town. So is that something that you guys are all? We would need volunteers to be at the table. So that's something to consider. The event is on June first. So do I like ask for a motion, or do I just?
I don't think we need a vote. I think you're just asking if it's. I don't think we need a vote, no. It's a sense of the commission that we participate in Bethel Pride.
Do you guys agree? Is it something you're interested in? Is it?
Any questions? Any comments?
Do you guys think you'll be available for part of that day?
Yeah. From wherever I am.
I might be out of town, I don't know.
Tia and I both, let's see if we're here.
How about you guys?
I am here. So, yeah, just, you know.
Let us know.
I'm thus far available.
Yes.
So give me some times before they fill up.
I think it's like twelve to five, but you can be flexible as to what time you are physically there. Peter and Kelly, you guys okay with that?
No problem.
Awesome. Great, thanks.
Yeah, you can reach out to Sunny and Katie, you know, let them know. Do I need to say, oh, give us two.
Sorry, on the Earth Day, we have a sign-up sheet to see about working with tables. I haven't seen anything. I may have missed it because I was traveling.
Because I was traveling.
Do you mean like?
Sign up to work that, that day to.
Oh, I thought there was a volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm confused. What are you asking? I'm sorry.
I'm asking for Earth Day.
Yes.
Has Katie sent out a volunteer listing to have people assist with the booth for the table, whatever you want to call it? For us, we're Sustainable Bethel.
I think she did that, yeah. For us, Sustainable Bethel to have a table at Earth Day?
Well, no, we should. We're having a table. It's for people to man the table, to be there behind the table, to talk to people and.
I mean, yes, she sent out the flyer. Are, are you asking if, if it's?
I'm asking about volunteers from the commission to help.
Oh, I don't think she sent that particular thing out. I think we were under the impression that most of us are going to help. Okay, well, I, okay, cool, all right, but I don't know if she's planning on sending that out.
How long is Earth Day, like, what's the time?
So, Earth, so Trashapalooza is from ten to twelve, and then the Earth Day Fair is from eleven to two. So there's an hour of overlap. I'm certainly going to be there most of the day.
So the fair itself selects it.
Here. So I would hope that most of us are there for Earth Day from eleven to two.
I'll follow up with Katie. Tia.
Do you guys all have the flyer? Okay. I'll send that out.
So why don't you send that out and then ask for Sustainable Bethel Commission volunteers for that, for the Earth Day event? Anything else related to commissioner reports?
I have something to add in. I was just wondering if there's been a formal request for Sustainable Bethel to participate in the Bethel Memorial Day Parade. I've had a, a friend reach out asking if we would be interested. Someone who's volunteering for the, you know, the team putting it together, coordinating it. So I can, I don't have any more information than that. I just am posing the question if we've been invited formally yet, or if that's something that we would be interested in participating in as a commission.
Do you know what the date of that parade is?
The nineteenth.
It is the nineteenth, right? That's what I thought.
Have we been asked yet officially or formally?
Never been asked, so.
No, to participate in the parade, to be in the parade, or to do what?
Yeah.
Specifically.
To participate in the, in the parade. Like I said, I, I didn't, I didn't engage to get more information yet, and I will. I just didn't know if, you know, the request had already been, been put out to the commission. So I will get more details as far as what the request is and level of participation, the dates and times and all of that, if it's something that we want to consider.
Okay, can you send that out to me?
Absolutely.
Find out, great, that's. Is, is there anything else under other business? Does anybody else have anything else? Okay. Well, our next meeting is April seventeenth, seven o'clock. Is, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, go ahead, just so you know, I, I. Oh, no, okay, never mind. My, it's my calendar change.
Yep. Oh, my God, I shut up at a meeting like forty-five minutes early yesterday, and they're like, I'm like, I just had it in my head. I just decided and didn't look at my phone. Oh, my gosh. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Kelly.
Bye.